Motions? Motions for President Counsel are closed then. Take the vote now. So, let's have a vote by counsel. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Landik. You may not feel that way as the meeting goes on. We have a motion for the election of Vice President of Counsel.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Matt Donovan.
Second. Julie, call the roll. Oh, excuse me. Are there any other nominations for the Vice President? Okay, Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Election Vice President Counsel. Welcome, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you.
The Law Director will now give the oath of office for the President of Counsel.
Actually, there's a guest.
Well, Mr. Gills is giving it, okay.
I, Bruce R. Landik solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Ohio.
And will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the municipality of Mentor.
Observe the ordinances and the provisions of the Charter of the City of Mentor.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of Counsel.
And will faithfully administer the duties of the Office of the President.
Faithfully discharge the duties. Watch my lips. Faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the President of Counsel.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the President of Counsel.
Congratulations.
I've never had that kind of trouble in my office, I'll tell you that.
Yeah. You're gonna put it on the wall? Oh, there's a pen over there? Wow. This is my first official duty.
This is a bigger turnout than I expected. Thanks for coming. You may be here for other counsel business, I realize, but since you're here, I do have a few words to say. I've abbreviated my remarks to 45 minutes instead of an hour and a half. Seriously, I want to recognize a few people present. Jim Gills, who just gave my oath as Lake County Engineers, the Lake County elected engineer. Thanks for being a great boss and a great engineer. May you win reelection so I may keep my full-time job. Jason Williger, candidate for Lake County Commissioner. Jonah Schultz, candidate for U.S. Congressional District 11. Best wishes in your primary. Katie Berger, from Congressman Dave Joyce's office. Hi, Katie. Family members Cindy and Ernie Layton, my sister, my brother-in-law. And lastly, but most significant, my wife Barrett Landik, who took a chance on me and came from Norway on a fiance visa in 1981. Wave your hand. Thanks for your support. Councilman Krieger, I want to thank you for your service as Counsel President. Are all these folks here because of you?
You.
They're here for you now.
You look relieved, John.
Yeah, I am.
I thank counsel for the favor of their vote. Charles Spurgeon said, "Every great favor brings a great trial as its shadow." For me, that translation could be, "What have I gotten myself into?" You see, this council is a very senior and stable group of leaders. There are four previous counsel presidents up here. Their experience is either invaluable, or it is four other ways of doing things other than my way. Here is why I'm hopeful of the former and not the latter. When I deployed to the Middle East in 2015 with the Ohio Army National Guard, everyone on counsel was very supportive. They covered my duties in Ward Three. They all said, "Whatever you need, give us a call." They invited Barrett out socially. And when our water heater died, Matt Donovan and a buddy came and installed a new one. Barrett and I remember, and we are grateful. So I believe they will be a great support in this new challenge. Following is a City of Mentor public service pronouncement. The USS Mentor is in great shape, watertight, seaworthy, and going places, or I could say, places are coming here. She is well manned. Captain and city manager Ken Filippiak has his administration humming. Existing department heads are performing well, and new ones are setting the bar higher. They work hard, they're people smart, and they don't seem to care who gets the credit. Our safety forces are known as the best in the area. So what could go wrong? In the late 1970s, I was in the U.S. Nuclear Submarine Service. We had an expression, "There are two kinds of ships, submarines and targets." That's substandard humor. But more dangerous than a launched torpedo is a hot-run torpedo. We trained for the hot-run torpedo, and we prayed it would never happen. Hot-run torpedo should always be preceded by the words, "This is a drill." When a weapons motor starts a propeller prematurely in the torpedo room, or in the torpedo tube prior to launching it to sea, is not a good day. The real thing is an internal killer. To be clear, a hot-run torpedo in this analogy is one that is inside of one of our own crew members on the USS Mentor. You see, today, there are lots of social torpedoes out there, and government is often a target. Perhaps for good reason, lack of trust. In our national political discourse, it is common practice to privately and publicly disparage those we disagree with. So when public employees encounter such bad behavior by residents, constituents, it may launch a hot-run torpedo inside of them. If the torpedo is not stopped, great damage occurs, and trust in government is the casualty. What to do? The good news is that those personal hot-run torpedoes inside of us can be disarmed. This vignette is from a flood control project in my Warren. A group of residents met with the administration to express frustrations over some construction issues. One resident was using some pretty rough language. It even reminded me of my early days in the military. She looked at the administration's leader and paraphrasing mildly, said something like, "I can see by the way you're looking at me that you're not going to do a thing about this. You don't care, and we are wasting our time." The leader calmly replied, "It's your language, ma'am." Taken aback, she agreed to restrain her language, and the meeting did a 180. It became productive. The hot-run torpedo that was humming and a number of city officials, including me, was disarmed. Trust in City Hall was sustained or even increased. A resident told me later that they were embarrassed by the disparaging words from their neighbor and appreciated what the city was doing. What I witnessed was the disarming nature of a leader's commitment to be a public servant instead of merely a public employee. They are very different cultures. Servants, real servants, are not always spoken kindly to, nor treated well. It comes with the territory. The key for each of us is whether or not, in the heart heat of the moment, our why for being in government is strongly grounded in being a public servant, not being a public official, and not being a politician. If serving is not our commitment, we may be in the wrong profession. But if being a public servant is the real why behind our jobs, then we can stand up to almost any how, how we are treated, how we are spoken to. Not knowing or remembering our why makes us very ordinary, or worse. I think all of us on counsel have experienced a resident that begins a tense conversation with, "You know, I pay your salary." Or, as even less politely stated in the 17 November News Herald, "We are paying for these morons who voted this in." That's a Mark 48 torpedo. In other words, a real big one. They are really tough to disarm. But the counsel person on the scene could not have handled it any better. Mentor's leadership is top-down and top-shelf. It will continue to be, if we remember our why of public service. Then we can take on any how that comes our way in order to build trust in the community we serve. And that will bring fair winds and God's speed to the City of Mentor.
(APPLAUSE).
Counselperson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Matthew Donovan.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respect.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter.
Of the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Vice President of Counsel.
Of Vice President of Counsel.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Joe. I sat next to Bruce for four years, and I didn't even know he talked. It's incredible. I just want, I want to thank counsel for all their knowledge in the past four, four and a half years that we've all worked together. We've had our bouts, we've had our problems, but in the end, we always do what's best for the constituents, and that's what I love about this counsel. I'd also like to recognize a ex-counsel person out in the audience out there. My mother's out there, Jean Donovan, 97 years old. She came to see me. Look at her waving. My wife and my, my wife and my two sons came, and I just want to thank you guys on counsel for having the belief in me to give me this chance to be Vice President, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of great things done. We're very fortunate in this city. All our people get up, they go to work, the kids go to work, and everybody goes to school. We just have a wonderful community. We've got excellent parks and police, and fire is incredible, and, and thank you all. I just really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Counsel chambers will now rise and observe a moment of silence for the passing of Planning Commissioner Joe Sedoti. You may be seated. Approval of the minutes. Counsel, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of December 3, 2019.
Move to approve. Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
And the minutes of the work session of December 16, 2019.
Move to approve. Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
We have two public hearings this evening. Prior to the first one, I just want to mention that in addition to the planning commission process at the city, administration reviews over an extensive counsel work session one and work session two tonight, tours of the Bolton property for counsel folk, workbooks, and many emails. We have been deliberating one of the most significant and important developments in the history of the City of Mentor. Ordinance number 20O-001. I now call the public hearing for ordinance 200-001 to order. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice published and posted according to law. Julie, please read the title.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 8.126 acres of land from R2 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District at 7640 Lake Shore Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Excuse me, we'll do the Rice property first. Mr. Filippiak, do you or a member of the administration have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do appreciate that. The location there, 7640 Lake Shore Boulevard. And Ms. Mitchell will make a few comments.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to rezonate acres of the former Dale R. Rice Elementary School property on Lake Shore Boulevard from the R2 Single Family Residential to RVG Residential Village Green District. The applicant presented a conceptual plan at the August 1, 2019 Planning Commission meeting for informal review that included a total of 20 subplots. The district regulations permit a maximum density of 2.5 units per acre in both the current R2 district and the proposed RVG. Following the informal review in August, the applicant submitted a preliminary subdivision and rezoning application for consideration by the Planning Commission at their October 3 meeting. The applicant presented a revised plan for the formal rezon submission that included a direct connection to Rice Drive. However, the residents in the surrounding neighborhood expressed concern over the connection and presented a petition opposing it. The application was tabled to allow the applicant an opportunity to further revise the plan. The applicant reconfigured the subdivision design, returning the layout to a cul-de-sac format for the Planning Commission's review at the November 14 meeting. The revised layout reduces the length of the proposed street to fall within the 600-foot maximum allowance for a cul-de-sac and eliminates the Rice Drive connection. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with this revised cul-de-sac design by a 5-0 vote with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments they would like to share?
Greg Summers, Summers Real Estate Group. A few comments. The issue with the neighbors and the connection, we worked really close with the neighbors to resolve that issue, and they were great to work with, and I'm glad we were able to come to a solution that was satisfactory to the city and the neighbors. We feel that Cardinal Meadow is gonna be a great new community. We were really thorough in working with the city and working through all the issues. I also wanted to add that I've met with Law Director Zeeman, and we're exploring some additional elements that we can work into the deed restrictions for the future management of open space, because that was also a concern. And one thing that I wanted to add to the presentation tonight, there is some encroachments, as I think everybody's aware of, and I've talked to Kathy about, we're gonna do some lot-line adjustments to basically consolidate those small areas into the neighbors' yards, and they can put up a nice fence, and we found that that was the best solution to do that. So, once we work through the rezoning, we are committing to doing that, and I think, I think that's all I have. So I'd open it up to any other questions that you guys have.
Counsel, have any questions?
Mr. President, just one. Mr. Zeeman, with, with that property, like you brought up, Mr. Summers, protruding into the yards, how was that agreement gonna read? I know there's a fence, an existing fence now. Is there language drawn up for that particular situation?
So, so my understanding is, and I had talked to Kathy about this, they're just gonna be, they're not gonna be lot splits, it'll just be a lot-line adjustment, and we could submit, I guess, if you guys wanted additional documentation, or some type of agreement, or if that's just between us as a landowner and our commitment to doing the lot-line adjustments to the neighbors. I, I guess, if you guys want to see additional documentation, let me know, but we were just gonna work directly with them and have our engineer give, you know, a good deal for the cost of doing the, any title work, legal descriptions, anything required for the lot-line adjustments. That was our plan, to work directly with the neighbors.
That's all I got. I mean, I, I, okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in the audience? Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone in opposition? Thank you. Counsel is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. Ordinance number 200002. I now call the public hearing for ordinance 200002 to order. This public hearing is being held pursuant to notice published and posted according to law. Julie, please read the title.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning approximately 186.53 acres from C1 Conservation and R4 Single Family Residential Districts to the PMUD Planned Mixed Use Development Overlay District for land adjacent to the south side of Johnny Cake Ridge Road and the east side of Center Street and extending to the Village of Kirtland Hills border, including permanent parcel numbers 16A0110000010, 0020, 0030, 0040, 0050, 0140, 0150, 0170, and 16A013, 0000160, 0170, and 0210 by MKSK and Bolton Properties Limited and declaring an emergency. Thank you.
Mr. Filippiak, do you or a member of the administration have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mitchell, please.
Thank you. The project for the Bolton property is a proposed rezon of 186 acres of land located at the intersection of Johnny Cake Ridge and Center Street from the existing C1 Conservation and R4 Single Family Residential Districts to a planned mixed-use development overlay district. On October 3, 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed the informal rezoning requested by the applicant who presented a mixed-use development concept for the Bolton property. The formal rezoning application was then submitted for review by the Planning Commission on November 7, 2019 at a formal public hearing. After further review and discussions at both the November 14 and December 9 meetings, the Planning Commission recommended the approval of the proposed rezoning and preliminary development plans for a proposed planned mixed-use development on December 9 by a vote of 6-1, with the conditions set forth in the staff report as well as the attached plans. The administration is recommending some minor modifications to these conditions, as noted and read, for further clarification.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments they would like to share?
Thank you, Counsel President. I would like to invite, first I should say, my name is Chris Herman, Principal with MKSK. I would like to invite Charlie Bolton and welcome him to say a few words as part of our presentation.
Congratulations, Charles Bolton, 8021 South Center, well, Center Street. Shows my age, doesn't it, by saying South Center Street? I don't know when that went out of use. I want you to recognize my brother, Bill Bolton, over here, my wife, Julie, and, and we, we want to thank the counsel and the Planning Commission, and I was so shocked when I heard of Joe Sedoti's death, because he took a big interest in our project and was quite vocal about aspects of it. And Ken Filippiak, the city manager, Kathy, the Kathy Mitchell, Director of Planning, Joe Zeeman, Law Director, and Kevin Malcheck, who's not here, who's the Director of Development. We've worked with all of these people, and we, we thank you very much for your help. And I hope that there are members of the audience here that will chime in and join in our discussions. We have worked on this project very hard, and we're very grateful for the assistance of some pretty knowledgeable people in the Planning Commission, I mean, in the Planning Department, MKSK from Columbus, you've just heard, been introduced to Chris Herman, Ken Kalunchek, who is from Project Management Corporation, or consultants here, and Tom Coyne, who's a member of, who's the head of the Real Estate Department, actually, at Thompson Heine and Florrie. We want this to be a good development. We realize that this is very important to the City of Mentor. Change is difficult. There were many people my age in Mentor who grew up sledding on our hill, on 615, believe it or not. That was a big hill in Mentor. That was before anyone went skiing, and a lot of people, you will realize, on Sundays would park all the way down the street, all the way down 615, all the way up our driveway. And so, you know, today, there was a phone call I got from my wife on my cellphone, "There's a bald eagle out in front of the house." Then, just as I sat down, there was another phone call. It was a computer call, wanting me to buy some insurance. You know, there's a big tug between the beauty of nature and the reality of modern life. And our property has changed since it was the sledding Mecca for Mentor, and change is difficult, but change must come to our property, and that's what this is all about. And so, we want to, we hope we've been forward-thinking. We want to preserve the best that there is in the property by preserving 69 acres as a natural area that will be available to the public, has some remarkable trees. We're lucky tonight to have Richard Cochran, Rich Cochran, here to speak about it. He's the head of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy that will own this property and administer it for the use of the Mentor residents in perpetuity. We also have in mind a lot of trails on the property, about five miles of trails. So, we hope that this will be a, we're, we've been on this property and across the street for 100 years. I actually have lived on the property for 70 years. My wife has lived on it for 40 years. This meant a lot to us, and we hope the best for this development, and we hope that you will agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. So again, I'm Chris Herman with MKSK. We have a great team with us. We've, we've had some great workshops with you already. We've been working on this project. Families have worked on this for years. We've been working very diligently since the summer, meeting multiple times with the Planning Commission, and we're excited to, again, share this project and answer your questions. questions. I'll quickly, since I know we have the community here, provide a little overview. I think you all are aware of this, but just to reiterate what Mr. Bolton said, we are very excited. We feel very strongly about this plan. One of the key pieces of it is the preservation of almost 70 acres, key natural features of the site, some of the best in northern Ohio, this area. As a conservation area that will be preserved for use by the community and as a natural area. Rich Cochran is here from the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. I'd like him to speak a moment for all of you and to the community.
Thank you for having me here. Since 1996, it's been my privilege to serve as the President and CEO of Western Reserve Land Conservancy, which was formerly known as Chagrin River Land Conservancy. And in this role, I've had the chance and frankly, the privilege to work on hundreds of conservation projects around this region. Since 1996, we've preserved 60,000 acres of land in northeast Ohio, both private and public, by completing nearly 800 individual conservation transactions. And of those 800 transactions, more than 200, I'm sorry, more than 200 of them have become public parks and preserves. With that context in mind, I'd like to share that I've never worked on a project with an ancient forest as significant as the one on this property. To my knowledge, there is only one forest in all of northern Ohio that has trees that are as old as the trees on the Bolton property, and that is in Wayne County. There are many giant trees on the Bolton property, as I think some of you know, and we believe that two of them are state record trees. And on Friday, the State of Ohio Forester will be there to confirm that. Because this is such an old forest, we have also found many rare species, including rare lichens. One of the lichens we found on the property is the only record of that species in all of Ohio ever. That's because the forest is so old, certain lichen only grow in ancient forests and there are very few of them left. We plan, as you know, to work with the Boltons to make this conservation area open to the public and connected to a much larger trail system that's woven throughout the development and connected to Newell Creek across the street. If this park is created, we are confident it'll create a cherished amenity not only for the residents of Mentor, but for residents of all of Ohio and perhaps other states as well. We believe it'll draw people from other states. We also believe that this project will attract lots of public funding to make it possible, to make it a public park and preserve. This public funding would include the Clean Ohio Fund, the Ohio EPA Water Restoration Fund, the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, the Ohio Forested Habitat Fund, and others. We base this on hundreds of conservation projects that we funded and completed. I'll end there and just ask if there are any questions.
Mr. Cochran, for the record, please state your name and address.
Richard Cochran, 2703 Rockland Road, Shaker Heights, Ohio.
Mr. Landak? Mr. Cochran, could you just explain to the audience how, what you need for this to happen, this preservation of this 69 acres?
What we need to have happen?
Yes.
First thing is, the plan has to be approved, obviously, so that the zoning is put in place. Then that parcel will be created and we will enter, we already have entered into a contract contingent on the rezoning to purchase it from them. And that, the terms of that contract are currently confidential, but we would have to raise the funding to do that, and we're confident we can.
And that contract, that's happened since the last time we've seen you, I take it? Because you didn't have it last meeting, I don't think.
I honestly don't remember if it was signed at the last meeting or not, but it is a contract at the moment.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, I'll turn it back to Chris. Thank you very much.
If I may, just a few more things. Again, I think you're all aware of this, but for the discussion, for the community, just a overview. The proposal is to rezon this to planned mixed-use development. Part of this, we are providing for five subareas. Subarea A, B, C, D, and E for this map. Each one has its own uses and development piece, but a key part of planned development in Mentor is the idea that you develop this as one cohesive area that works well together, responds to nature, and provides amenities for the community. And we believe we've done that and taken advantage of great features of the site. We have a conceptual street network composed as part of this. Again, just so everyone's on the same page, hopefully you can see this dot, laser dot. At the top of the site is Johnny Cake Ridge Road. On the north, along the western side is Center Street. At the bottom of this is Interstate 90. And then on our boundary here, we actually have a piece of Kirtland Hills, the City of Kirtland Hills, that divides this property through the conservation area. And we are bringing in the portion in City of Mentor as part of this rezoning. It includes this road network, which extends Norton Parkway into the site. I'll talk a little bit more about this, but this is ideally a village center gathering area for the community and for the development. We have, which, when we come into final development plan, we'll have our name, but Street A, which is a north-south street internal to development that provides circulation between the different areas. We have a Street B to the south off of Center that will provide access to the gateway area as you come into Mentor. And then we have residential streets, Street C and D and E, that provide access into the development as well as access for the community and the public to the conservation area and the amenities of the site. In addition to the conservation area, which I think is very significant for the city and the region, we also have park spaces provided for. We are preserving the, along this Subarea A, this northern part along Johnny Cake and along the northern part of Center Street, the mounds there as an edge condition. We will address stormwater as part of this project so that it is contained and detained on this site and improved. We are, a key part of this is preservation of the Bolton House as a central feature to this development and as an edge to the conservation area. Again, for the community to enjoy. The entry drive to the house will be preserved as a trail that connects it to the site. Just as an aside, it won't be a road. We have to create an alignment and intersection with Norton Parkway. So, we do want to preserve the nice tree-lined drive there. And then sprinkled throughout the different subareas, there will be parks, gathering spaces, as well as a community gathering area here by Center Street for the development and for the community. We have, again, these different subareas, the northern Subarea A. This area is residential. The idea is to have townhomes along this main street that face the green space conservation area. It's a great feature internal to the site. We have blocks in here that are walkable. The streets lead you and have people pull it into as you walk through the community, face into the conservation area, and mingle down into Subareas B, which is our village center. This will be a mix of uses, retail particularly along Norton Parkway, retail on the first floor, commercial office, residential above. This will serve the needs, local needs. This is not a shopping center or a new mall. This is a walkable, strollable, outdoor dining kind of destination for this neighborhood and for the community. And then Subarea C here to the south, again, is the gateway where we expect to have offices, potential hotel uses as a welcoming presence, and also as an economic generator that also facilitates and helps with the development of the Cleveland Clinic across the street. So this is the illustrative site plan. You can see, I should probably describe a little bit for the community, these white boxes are building footprints. You'll see the design, this is called traditional walkable design with the buildings along the streets. You walk along the sidewalks, walk along the streets, stroll past the storefronts. The surface parking lots are internal to the blocks. You don't experience them. You drive into them, you can walk into the development, but as you walk along the streets, you don't experience the surface parking lots. The gray areas are townhomes. For the residential, when we do planning, we don't draw the individual building footprints. I think it's important to point this out. So what we're drawing on the residential side are the blocks. You see the gray, these will be townhomes up here. These are single-family lots. We did not draw the individual homes in the driveways. We're showing just the individual lots as they fit here with the streets and alleys that serve them. Down here, we show office buildings, hotel uses in Subarea C. Small specialty grocery on the site as well as part of this development. So, we think it really responds well to the site. It'll be a great amenity, gateway to the Mentor, economic development for the city, help facilitate the Cleveland Clinic development, create a gathering point, a central community gathering area for the community, a strollable, walkable area, and provide residential development of a type that's needed and underrepresented in the city of Mentor, as well as the leadoff piece, which is a fantastic conservation area that will be enjoyed and publicly available to all. I can talk a little bit more detail about the subareas, I think, in Q and A. We've already had some discussions just to show some of the benchmarks for residential development that we're talking about. This is the single-family and townhome development style that we're talking about in Subarea A and Subarea B. This is the Bolton Estate. You see, these are rendering, showing what this would look like. This is looking at the pond internal to the site, looking north and west towards the intersection of Johnny Cake and Center Street. This is the development, the neighborhood walkable development in Subarea A. You can see the Bolton Estate preserved here. This is that Street A spine that winds through the neighborhood. We'll have on-street parking for the public and for the community. This is a close-up of Subarea B, again, this commercial village node. You can see some of the benchmark pictures of the kinds of buildings here. It also has, takes advantage of the conservation area. We have central gathering space. We have some retail here for everyone to enjoy. And then we have a rendering here to show you a sense of this. This is now Center Street at the bottom. We are now looking east. This is the conservation area at the top of the picture. This is the new extension of Norton Parkway. This is the walkable retail mixed-use environment. Again, you can see parking exists, but it's behind here, so you don't experience it. You can stroll this, there'll be outdoor dining, you can shop through here. We have a central gathering community place. Ideas probably have a little bit of retail restaurant area and features for the community to gather and celebrate that space. Subarea C, which is the gateway to the community, again, I mentioned hotel offices. This is an economic generator. This is looking from Interstate 90. You can see right here at the bottom right of the slide, this is the ramp that comes off of 90 to Center Street. This is Center Street. This would give you a sense of the hotel office development in this area. Again, parking, service parking be the center, you experience the buildings and the nice green space as a gateway into the city. And we think it's a really special development. So, happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, we'll reserve that till after the public hearing.
I apologize. Let me say for the community, the Planning Commission meeting, Council, Plan Commissioners and Council and all of you, the community raised concerns about traffic. We do have Lori here to talk about the traffic study. We commissioned a traffic study as part of this. She can share a little bit about that. I think it's also really important to say for all of you, for the community, to understand, before we talk about traffic, that this is a special kind of development review process. It's a little different than some of the other things. In most situations that you see in Mentor, when a property are asked to rezon the site, go through the Planning Commission, go through Council. When it's approved, it's rezoned, and then it just goes to building permits and works with the city. Under planned development, there's three steps. We're at the middle step. This is the preliminary plan, and this requires Planning Commission recommendation. They've made recommendations, a number of conditions, Council approval, which we're asking for tonight, and then it goes to the voters for your vote. If you approve it, if the city of Mentor, the community of Mentor approves it, then this zoning takes place, but development cannot happen until there's a final development plan stage. So there's a new next-last stage. And at that stage, we bring in very detailed plans of the buildings, of the architecture, of the materials, of the parking, of the landscape, all those components. We have Planning Commission meeting, public's invited, it's a public meeting. Planning Commission reviews it, city reviews it to make sure it matches the intent of what we've shown you for the vote, what we've shown city council to agree to as part of this plan. So, there is a next stage. So we want to reassure everyone that Planning Commission, Council will get to review this and city staff, and all of you will get to review the details moving forward after rezoning approval, should we be fortunate enough to get approval from city council, approval from you at a popular vote. So let me have Lori come up and talk about the traffic study.
Thanks, Chris. My name's Lori Adams. I'm with DGL Consulting Engineers, I'm the Managing Principal of that firm, and I've been a traffic engineer for almost 34 years. This is a, my job here is to take the information that Chris just shared with you, which is all of the preliminary details of what they would like to build, and figure out what does that mean in terms of the traffic it'll generate and what will be the impact on the roads that you already have. We have counted traffic. We did that back in October, and we know that there's already some issues with traffic. Johnny Cake Ridge and Center Street have, already has some issues. We've identified that there's some turn lanes that are needed that already exist today. We already know that the interchange, while it works well right now as the traffic grows, even without any development, this development or the Cleveland Clinic, that would, you know, that interchange is going to need some work at some point. So, those things have been identified, and we also know that with the traffic that's going to be generated by a development such as this, new things are going to have to be built. Some turn lanes will need to be built, some new signals will be installed. We'll have to add a signal component to the Norton Parkway intersection for the development. There'll be a new, there will be a new signal closer to the interstate. Other improvements to Johnny Cake Ridge will be required. And the development team is willing to work with the city and figure out what those are going to be. We have completed a preliminary traffic impact study, which the city is just beginning to review, and the team is willing to sit down and discuss those things, you know, when the, when the plan gets, if the plan gets approved and moves forward, they're ready to address whatever traffic concerns there may be and...
Lori, your address for the record, please.
My address is 3455 Briarfield Boulevard, Mommy, Ohio.
Thank you, Lori. And just maybe to make a finer point on that, we are committed, the Bolton family is committed to addressing the traffic issues as part of this project should it move forward. And we understand that we need to be part of the solution. And I don't think I ever said my address, I apologize. So Chris Herman, Principal, MKSK, 462 South Ludlow Alley, Columbus, Ohio. Thank you.
Is that completing your applicant presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this item? Sir? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded and televised.
My name's John Demitru. I live at 7439 Lauren J. Drive in Mentor. I've lived there since 1985. Been a Mentor resident since 1977. Like most Mentor residents, especially long-term residents, as Mr. Bolton said, change is very difficult to accept. We don't like to see this be a big parkland for the rest of our lives, but change is inevitable, and I just wanted to encourage city council to do whatever they can possibly do to make this plan come to fruition, because I think it's a rare day when any private landowner offers to work with a good organization like the Land Conservancy to preserve 70 acres of beautiful land just for the enjoyment of the citizens of Mentor and the surrounding community. I know there's traffic issues, and I know there's sewage issues and everything else that has to be figured out, but I simply wanted to come out in favor of what I think is a well-balanced development plan. And I don't like ordinarily any rezonings, but this one seems to be thought out and seems to be the best possible use for the property. So I hope we can work it out, because that's 69 acres, just for comparison purposes, is bigger than the entire Garfield Park, which is the nearest recreational area. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of this item? Anyone else to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded and televised.
My name is Bob Quell. I live at 8527 Johnny Cake Ridge Road. And, by the way, this is not a sympathy appeal here. I just had to have my ankle operated out. And Bruce, I'd like to thank you for your service. Most people think I'm crazy because I'm a Marine. You are crazier than I am, sir. All right? I was in once, and submarines look good in the rearview mirror. That being said, by the way, before we go any further, most of you people, I think, are aware of what happened tonight. Say a prayer tonight. Iraq was attacked, I mean, one of our locations, Iraq was attacked by Iran today. So, please, say a prayer for those of us who, you know, I mean. By the way, I lived in the Mid East. Salaam alaikum. Anyway, first of all, I, this is really not wanted. It's not good for the city of Mentor. First of all, I was a member, I am a member of the, you know, I support the Western Reserve land. I started with the Grand River Association. Used to go out there when they had a body every May and clean up the river. It's nice that piece of property. You understand? But these ancient trees are very fragile, and you can't dig up around them. You have to give them a lot of space. You start bulldozing near them, and they will eventually not be ancient trees. They will be history. Now, this is not good for Mentor. It's a glorified, there's these multi-use areas all over the place. There's one on the west side. There's Legacy Village. There's a couple of them down by Mentor. And the ones in Mentor, the one in Westlake, they're surrounded by 360 population with incomes that are quite a bit higher than what we have around here. We have 190, maybe 200 degrees of circle that you're going to recruit from. All right? Now, the other thing is, you cannot, by the way, I need to say something, Bruce. At the last meeting, I was almost a hot torpedo. I'm doing my darndest, and I did it there, to not become a hot torpedo here. I'm 76 years old. I worry about our grandchildren. Change is good. How do you change an abandoned structure, i.e., Western 84, Sears, et cetera, back into green space? How do you do that? How do you do that? Now, you know, we have these grandiose plans come up all over northeast Ohio. Hey, 40 years ago, Randall Park Mall was the largest mall in the world with an attached or on-location 15-story luxury hotel. Where is that now? The large, I know you're saying this is multi-use, but it's really a glorified business development in a little shopping center. We don't need that. I mean, who's going to pay? He said, "We're committed." Committed doesn't say, "I'll write a check for that." They're committed. They're not paying. These are, by the way, he's very good with words. Hang on, I've got notes. By the way, I also would like to leave for you people, the Plain Dealer A section from December 22nd, a greener Cleveland, neighborhoods would benefit from new parks. Yes, we're not Cleveland, nor do we want to be. All right, now, I live right where you went, the access road from 84, you know, the diversion road, would come right into my picture window. It's my house, my picture window. I don't like those lights coming in. Should I stand up there naked and let the fact that there's an ugly 76-year-old guy standing there naked throw up so they could use the other access road? Come on. You laugh. This is my house. This is my living room those lights are coming into. And right where you're taking them out is the best stands of pines on the whole property on the south side. Traffic. Ma'am, we have traffic. It's a mess. It's a parking lot. It's going to get worse. Who is going to pay for the expansion? Not committed. I haven't heard him saying, "Here's the check." By the way, here's a very important thing. The National Board of Realtors said that if your property is within 600 feet of a green space, and don't give me the half-green space here, it could be up to 19% of this total value. Are you going to pay me for my loss of 19% of my value?
Speak into the microphone, please, and to counsel.
I asked the gentleman if he's going to pay me for the 19% that I'm going to lose my value when he puts his access road right into my picture window. This is not good. Well, I asked, little than two years ago, we voted down another development. Mr. Bolton, I can understand your desire to clean it up and get out of town for your family. I'm not that far behind you. I'm doing the same thing, and I'm worried about my family.
Mr. Quell?
Yes?
Would you direct your comments to counsel?
Okay.
There is no criticism of individuals permitted.
Okay, I apologize.
I also want to state that it's normally four minutes.
Okay.
I've extended you. You are a Marine, but please, if you could.
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I thank you for the thing. I hope you do the right thing. The right thing is for the citizens of Mentor. Not, not for Mr. Bolton, not for this guy behind me.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
She should have gone first. She should have gone first. She should have, yeah. I need to go.
Got one over there.
Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Karen Hammack. Hello, Bruce Landy. I went to school with you. I don't know if you remember me. I was Karen Smith.
That's right. I do remember you.
How are you?
I'm fine.
I met your lovely wife today.
Thank you.
I have lived at Mentor 60 years. Yes, okay. We'll get, we'll get the teacher voice out. I am a teacher in Wickliff. I have lived at Mentor 60 years, since I was three years old. We currently live at 8497 Johnny Cake Ridge Road, which is right across from Bolton's When we moved in there 30 years ago, I lived with my life partner. The Boltons welcomed us when my daughters went over to feed the horses. My daughters are now 40 and 37, and I have six grandchildren. We were taken aback when we talked to Mr. Bill Lennon, who happens to, well, he's a realty. Everybody knows that. He is, was also my youngest daughter's third grade teacher. We were very surprised to find out that they were putting homes across from us and a mixed-use realty, I mean, excuse me, retail, retail. I'm breathing. The last meeting I couldn't come to because I had to attend something for my grandson. We're concerned about the traffic that's coming through there. People see the hill now and think they're in farm country. They go 90 miles an hour. We lost a neighbor of 15 years and his young wife and their three toddler grandchildren, because someone tried to turn around their yard and almost killed one of their children. Seven years ago, I don't know if Mr. Bolton himself knows, but someone over at Bolton's farm, because they were having water problems, they pumped water across the street on Route 84. We had to call the police because they were flooding the yards. One of our neighbors, three doors down, had their garage flooded and had to, and they had just moved in, not long before that happened. We live on land, when our land was originally part of Garfield's land. When we moved under our home 30 years ago, we found out we had downspouts connected to sanitary sewers. We had to call a company, and unfortunately, we couldn't sue the previous owners. One of the gentlemen who was in that company, which is Lake County Sewer, had said that he was one of the people who put the original sewers in when they went from septic to sewer. So, those are the original sewers that are under our land. There is also a stream running under our land. At one point, part of the Grand River ran through our land when President Garfield lived there. One minute. Thank you, Bruce. We're concerned about the septic. We're concerned about the sewage. We're concerned about somebody coming out in the middle of our drive and coming into our driveway. It's gotten really bad. So, we're very, very concerned about that and concerned about we won't be able to sell our home. Because we're both in our 60s, the girls are gone, and, you know, one day we'd like to sell the home. But we're very concerned about that. And I know that they're trying to do something wonderful, because Boltons are wonderful people, and I know the history of that farm. And they were so kind. When my daughters went over to feed those horses before those hills were put in, their family came over and welcomed us to that area. My heart is in Mentor, and I don't want to see this happen. Thank you.
Ma'am, speaking against, and I would encourage you to not repeat if you have the same items and use your four minutes wisely. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Mary Pumper. I live at 7954 Walcott Way in Newell Creek. I also am a teacher. I'm going to just state that this has been very concerning on very many, on a lot of The conservation area, what's being conserved is about 69 or 70 acres out of 186.53. That's about 37%. It's not a whole lot. The rest of it is being developed. And at risk of being repetitive, and I'm not going to do that, I completely agree with what has been said before. I am concerned, Bob, I believe, is absolutely correct. It is a fact that if you bulldoze close to these trees, they will die. That is a fact. One of my very deep concerns is if there is a hotel, as was talked about, and all of the very densely packed development that I'm seeing in these plans, I'm also worried about crime. I'm worried about what that type of thing brings into all of our neighboring areas. We have a lot of young families. I know that where there are these hotels and retail and that sort of thing, that close to residential areas, there is an increase in crime, and I do worry about that. We do have some break-ins in the Newell Creek area, and I believe that this will increase it. The fact that the traffic is going to go up, as has been said before, has, as has been said, is a huge concern. The city of Mentor is beginning to look like a hodgepodge of just, it's an eyesore. I'm sorry to say that. I've lived in Mentor for years. I'm actually not a lifelong Mentor resident. I've been transplanted from the west side. I've loved raising my daughters here. However, I'm looking at it as time is going on, it's really, I think, taking a turn for the worse. There's a lot of areas, there's vacant strip malls, there's the Great Lakes Mall, all of that. I don't see anything that really is coming good out of that. So, I'm worried about it. If the planning commission has some sort of a cohesive plan for how Mentor should look, that's one thing, but I don't think there is one, as I can see with these little hodgepodge of developments. It seems as every little square inch of Mentor has to be developed. I think you need to think about that. I think if this whole area was planned as a conservation area, and we can ex all of the tightly-packed buildings and residential area, if we can get rid of that, maybe that would be something we can consider, and I can see that my time is up. That's all I want to say. Please think about what this is doing to the residents who are taxpayers, who are going to be most affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another person who is registered to speak against, Deborah McCauley.
Hello, Deborah McCauley of 6730 Farmingdale Lane, Mentor. Woo-hoo. Couple of the comments that I had have already been addressed, but can I address the council at, how do I? I want to know when will the voters actually be able to cast a vote? What timeframe are we looking at here?
Well, we, usually, we just listen to you, and I think we'll address that later, but it's the March 17th primary date.
Okay. I do represent Mentor Citizens for Responsible Zoning. It's an open political action committee. If anybody would like to take it over or help me, it's there. I'm thinking that the people that live, I live off of 306 near Lake Catholic, so it doesn't impact me as greatly, but I'm hoping that someone that lives closer to that area may be interested. I'll certainly do my very best to help. In terms of the traffic studies, you're probably only studying six, yeah, 615 and 84. The impact on Route 306 is going to be pretty big, because people like me are going to try to avoid that area and get off at a different exit. So, I, is that something that the traffic, who's the traffic person that I talked to?
Just make your comments, and I think they'll have a chance to respond.
Yes. I am concerned if they look at the other freeway exits and how it will impact other major streets in our area. I questioned the term improvement. You're talking about dismantling an already-built bridge, making it wider. You need to widen Route 84 to accommodate all of this traffic. How is that improving anything in this city? And, yeah, lastly, I'll end with my favorite subject, which is animals. The eagles that were in the front yard belong to another land across the street from the freeway that I fought against in 2017, and the Mentor voters did say eh-eh. So, that was voted down, and that's only four acres as opposed to 186. So, I just ask that our Mentor voters, if we have the opportunity, that you see fit to keep this zoned as C1 conservation. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone else for this item? Yes, ma'am.
My question is, if the Mentor residents vote this down, what is Plan B?
I'll let the applicant respond to that later.
Okay. And then, I guess, also, is Plan B worse than Plan A? So, that'll be addressed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Sir?
I guess mine's more in question is the density. What I'm most concerned about is the retail, you know, everybody's talked about traffic. I used to work at Lubrizal. I did a lot of planning, a lot of stuff over the years, but that seems extensive for that type of property in that area. So, if there's any way to maybe, and I'm not the positivist what's going to go in the beginning. We never talk phases here. Phase one, phase two, phase three. It's a lot of money. It's going to be phases. But that density of that area of that, the hotel, doesn't really bother me too bad, but just that overall... But just that overall density, you guys are explaining the walking areas and stuff like that, but that's really running out to the traffic. It'd be really nice to see that go into housing and that whole area, the conservation area, the housing, because the housing, the people, of course, will pull out, go to work. It won't be that dense when you put homes in. But you add that other stuff, especially by that interchange. And it's really, I don't care what we do, looking at the entrance and exits of that area, coming out onto, that area is going to be very difficult. But I really, that's the only thing I'm going to say here. I'm really against that overall density, all the complex of the buildings and stuff, the retail. We really don't need no additional retail. I appreciate that.
Sir, could you repeat your name, please?
Robert Manross, 7661 Center.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition for this item? Now, there were a number of questions, and once the public hearing is closed, the second legislative items, we will consider legislation, and the applicant will then have an opportunity to respond to some of those questions. So again, is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Counsel is in receipt of all correspondence and emails received pertaining to this matter. This public hearing is adjourned. New legislation. Ordinance number 20001.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Manor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 8.126 acres of land from R2 Single Family Residential District to RVG Green, RVG Village Green District at 7640 Lake Shore Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, what is your pleasure? Questions? Discussion?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
No.
Ordinance number 20002 has passed. 001, excuse me, has been approved. Ordinance number 20002.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Manor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 186.53 acres from C1 Conservation and R4 Single Family Residential Districts to the PMUD Planned Mixed Use Development Overlay District for land adjacent to the south side of Johnny Cake Ridge Road and the east side of Center Street and extending to the village of Kirtland Hills border, including permanent parcel number 16A011000010, 0020, 0030, 0040, 0050, 0140, 0150, 0170, and 16A013000, 0160, 0170, and 0210 by MKSK and Bolton Properties Limited and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak, comments on this legislation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I would just start off by saying that one of the virtues of our PUD district as an overlay is that it does have the benefit of being able to go to in front of the people, and they will decide as a community whether or not this is good for us. I did want to thank the members of the Bolton family and their representatives, the extraordinarily cooperative process here. Obviously, the family has been very highly regarded in our community for many, many years, and we, it's not often that we're able to work as well and get as much of the information and detail that we need on a timely basis, so we do appreciate that, whatever the outcome Guess the only other information I would offer is that, is there, we have had multiple public meetings and counsel and the administration, we're very closely with, and deliberating over final plans here. We believe that we're providing a very nice opportunity for the community. One of the things this represents to us that we like, and again, I think someone pointed out during the public hearing comments, that we don't know what the alternatives might be down in the future, but we do know that the Bolton family intends to provide something that would be unique and high caliber in this community. And that has, that certainly has appeal. I think counsel, obviously counsel will have many opportunities going forward to fashion this to its liking through the final approval plan, if in fact the voters and counsel tonight moves this forward. We will be working very closely with you on that. I have full confidence that we will be able to manage the traffic issues in the area. Developments like this in the Cleveland Clinic may actually provide us with the opportunity we need to clean up some of the existing issues that are there now, much like we're able to resolve storm drainage issues when projects like this arise. So we will look forward to working closely on those as they go forward, and working closely with the neighbors should this get approved. Because with any project like this, a property that has been in conservation, private property use, and pretty unassuming for as many years as this had, and a change which is inevitable does create some issues that we will look to mitigate as much as possible. So we are looking forward to the opportunity of working with the conservation, working within the conservation area and with Western Reserve on the development of that property. It's, obviously has appeal for a lot of our residents, and that has been expressed. Again, not knowing what alternatives on that property are, I can certainly at least say that that would be something that we would look forward to in counsel. Certainly familiar with the costs associated, because it's not too dissimilar from our Springbrook Meadows Park recently, where we have many, many millions of dollars invested in that. This is an opportunity for the community to take advantage of that at almost no cost. So we're happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. Ms. Mitchell has done a fantastic job of trying to go over and provide every detail possible to help you make an informed decision and to help fashion conditions and stipulations that we think are going to be very important for this to move forward, if in fact you vote for it. And we're happy to elaborate on any item that may have been touched on this evening or in the past.
Counsel, I intend to give the applicant opportunity to respond to some of the public's questions and comments, but first, discussion on Mr. Philippiak's comments or further questions for the administration?
No questions of the administration, but it might be worthwhile to point out that, you know, it's brought up about Newell Creek in the past, which I wasn't on council at the time, but I know several council people were. And I know throughout all the meetings we've had was to rectify the problems we had concerning the development of Newell Creek, that a lot of the residents don't understand that legally we really can't prevent people from developing their own property. We, through the City of Manor, the Planning Commission, the council, look for these type of meetings, these type of classifications, using the code and the ordinances to follow so that we can guide the development of those properties under our control. As it turned out with Newell Creek, as my understanding was, we lost that control because of the fact that it went to, when it's turned down by the residents, for example, it goes to the courts. The court then tells us, the city and the populace, what can be built there or not built there. In that fact, we kind of lose control to a certain degree. I think it's beneficial that we have the control that we have through our code and ordinances to guide that design. And it's not something that, you know, is going to happen even tonight, even if it's approved tonight. The fact is, it still goes to final, which means the developer has to come back in, give us all the current, all the facts of the development issues of materials and so on, of what's going to happen on that property. So it's still subject to change again. So I just think, wanted the public to know that, you know, we don't take this lightly that, you know, but we also understand we can't prevent development there. It's how we want to go about it. We prefer to maintain control, is my point of view. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Donovan.
I don't know if you would mind if I assisted the residents who asked some questions to ask the administration and maybe Mr. Zeeman the questions that the residents asked, and maybe they could answer some of those questions that they came up with.
To the applicant?
Yes.
Will the applicant come to the microphone, please?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the public aware of the situation with the Bolton House. The planning put in a condition. Could you explain that condition of the situation? There's a lot of people concerned about the preservation, and the planning came up, and you guys came up with a sort of a good idea on our situation with that.
Obviously, it's an important part of this plan. It's important to the Bolton family, it's important to the team. So we are working as part of this, and we come back from final development plan, on preserving it and having a use that's added both this development and to the maintenance on long-term viability of the house. But we do always have to be aware of the realities long-term, and so we put a condition in, if there ever got to a point where we were not able to preserve the house because of the cost and not finding a viable use, that we would agree to a 60-day period of discussions with the city and any interested parties on how to protect it.
Thank you. My next question, that's someone asked, the stormwater and sewer situation in the water pretty much self-contained into the property and the development, I would guess, we could ask Mr. Swigger if he has any opinion on that, just to give the residents some relief on, it's going to have storm sewers, it's going to have sanitary, it's going to have water.
Correct. As far as the stormwater control or detention, we'll be on-site. We'll be trying to direct as much water from this development to the west, to the detention basin at Garfield and 84. So that's one of our, one of our goals, is to do that, to split as much of that off. As far as sanitary, that'll all have to go through the Lake County Department of Utilities, but it'll all be sewed. And that sewage will go to the Manor wastewater treatment plant. So Aqua Ohio will serve the property with water, but all of those things are standard when developing property, and we have a lot of control over how that happens. So as far as the, those, traffic is always, is always an issue with development, and it's always studied, and this is, they started off with a pretty thorough preliminary traffic study. It did not include State Route 306, brought up, so maybe that's something they can.
Thank you. I guess this would be the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. I think one of the residents mentioned that the trees will die.
Right.
Is there a certain distance or safe distance that you can stay away from a preserved 69 acres area like that? Is that, is that in the plan?
Yes, it is in the conservation planning that was done. None of the ancient trees will be threatened, even remotely, by the development. But those statements were true, that if you bulldoze or develop too close to a mature tree, it will jeopardize that tree's life. But the conservation planning on this particular preserve has been done to preserve the ancient trees by several hundred to 400, to even in some cases over, well over 1,000 or 2,000 feet from any impact whatsoever. So I'm not worried about it at all. Our conservation planning team's not worried about it, but that is a real thing that would be a risk if the development got too close to those trees.
Thank you. I guess a question on the density, one of the residents, if you could comment on the density and the reason you feel that the density is correct for that property.
Thank you. Yes, so I guess first thing, it's important to point out that your, the city's code basically allows a maximum density in a PMUD of eight units an acre. What we're proposing here is just at, maybe a little under four units an acre, so we're at half of what's permitted by code. There is always development, particularly mixed use, a balance. You need to have enough people and units to help support some of that retail that we're trying to bring into this, and also just to provide some of the liveliness and livelihood of the neighborhood. So we are not trying to overcrowd or saturate the site. We are trying to get a balance of a very walkable community that people want to live in, that also supports the uses that we're trying to encourage in this location.
Thank you.
So do I, but let's just open it up. Others on council that have specific questions for either the applicant or the administration?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Young lady in the Aqua had asked about Plan B on this development plan. If this doesn't pass through the voters, what's the Plan B?
We do not, we've put all our eggs in this, we do not have a Plan B, this is what we are pursuing. Obviously, a lot of work that's gone into all this, including with the Western Reserve and the conservation area, all these things are contingent on this effort. So without this resounding, without this moving forward, then all that starts all over again.
Because I think Councilman Krieger did an excellent job outlining what happened on the other side of 615. It's a concern.
Sure.
Thank you.
See if Bruce has anybody else. Anyone else on council, questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman Donovan.
I'd like to direct this at law director, Zeeman. We have a couple of conditions that we would like to incorporate, and a couple amendments that we would like to make. I'd like Mr. Zeeman to go through them and read them off and let us know what, and then we're going to vote on them.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. And this sort of dovetails off of the work session a little bit. First and foremost, attached as Exhibit B to Ordinance 002 is the site development plan. At the work session, actually, before the work session, but it was formally presented to council at the work session, was a revised site development plan. It's labeled by the applicant as Figure 5.1. The change from what's currently attached to 002 is in the southeast corner, excuse me, the northeast corner of SubArea A, the, what they've called estate lots have been enlarged from what was, from what's currently attached to the ordinance. So if council desires to substitute the revised Figure 5.1 as Exhibit B, there should be a motion to amend in that respect. And related to that, perhaps this could be one motion if council desires, Exhibit, current Exhibit B2 attached to Ordinance 002, that's just a sort of a zoom in, if you will, on SubArea A. It also reflects the larger estate lots in the northeast corner. And for council's benefit, it's, that's this plan, and that was the larger one. So that would be the first potential amendment if council wants to make sure that those estate lots are actually larger than what's currently attached to the ordinance. Mr. President, if you want to go through these one at a time and poll council?
Well, why don't you present all the amendments, and then we can either bundle them or take them individually? It's council's pleasure.
All right. Because some of these would require me to read them into the record. I don't know what your preference is, Mr. President.
Certainly, read them into the record.
Thank you. Along with that revision to Exhibits B and B2, in the current conditions at Paragraph 1, there's references to plans that were submitted on November 25 of last year. I think that adding some language at the end of those sentences to reflect that the exhibits as amended will clarify any confusion that may potentially be caused with current condition number one. Current condition number three, that, that condition pertains to there not, there being a limited use along the ground level on what would be the extended Norton Parkway. This proposed amendment came from the applicant. I think that- that some members of council were interested in entertaining it as well. So, the current condition, the current language is, "The buildings proposed along Norton Parkway entry corridor within Subarea B shall be ground floor retail with the allowance for smaller, small office, comma. The new language would state residential amenity spaces and limited ancillary uses consistent with and supportive of residential use, including lobby space, common areas, resident fitness center, et cetera," end of the new language. And then the current language would be residential. The new word "units" would be imposed, and then it would continue with the current language, "Shall only be permitted above office retail," and then that would continue as, as current. So that would be a modified condition number three. The next potential modified condition would be number 17. Again, I believe that this applicant, this came from the applicant, and was discussed during the work session. The current language for condition 17 states, "In Subarea B or Subarea C, parking shortages due to the shared parking concept shall be resolved by introducing structured parking." The new language would state, "Or via other remedies acceptable upon final approval of an amendment to the development plan." I believe that there was a discussion relative to prohibiting any use of State Route 84, Johnny Cake Ridge, for construction or hall roads. That would take the form of a brand-new condition, number 19, which would state, "Construction and hall roads shall not utilize Johnny Cake Ridge Road, SR 84, and may only utilize Center Street, SR 615, as approved by the city manager." There was discussion as well about council reserving to itself jurisdiction to review any potential future amendments to the approved development plan. That would take the form of condition, a new condition, number 20, and proposed language would state, "Changes to the approved preliminary and/or final development plans and/or conditions shall require council review and an amendment to Ordinance Number 20-002 after review and recommendation by the municipal planning commission." Finally, what I have in my notes, council, is a potential new, new condition, number 21. That addresses other uses in Subarea C. It would state, "There shall be no residential or retail uses in Subarea C." I believe that may be everything. If I'm missing something, I can get, I can get drafting.
Okay. I think I'll summarize these conditions, revisions, and new conditions, and then for further discussion, to see if council wants to entertain each one, or all, or none.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Martin.
I'd like to hear from the administration, because that's what they're paid to do, is they're the experts, that's why we hired Mr. Flippeak. Ms. Mitchell, are you prepared to go one by one at this particular time?
Well, we-
Mr. President?
Certainly.
I think we're generally agreeable to most of the conditions. I mean, ostensibly, most of these conditions were either resulted either from council's initiative or the administration's initiative or planning commission. I would want to draw your attention to one, however, because in the, because of time limits, we didn't really get a chance to get into this during the work session immediately prior to council. But regarding condition three, this came as recently as today, and the addition of a language that include, that allows the ground floor space along Subarea B to be utilized for, originally, the intention was to, well, the original provision provided that the building proposed along Norton Parkway corridor shall be ground floor retail with allowance for small office. The purpose behind that was to provide a clear demonstration that that corridor was going to provide some type of vitality in terms of retail space, or some services that the general public could look forward to taking advantage of. It was one of the areas that I think provides the most interest for those who won't be living there, or perhaps not using the conservation area for recreation purposes. In our opinion, and again, we didn't have a lot of time to debate this, and I, and I would invite council to at least look to give it some consideration. In our opinion, that the, the addition of allowances that are predominantly residential amenities kind of undermines the whole purpose of that. Not to say that they won't attempt to develop it as retail, I think that's the intent. But if it doesn't work out, and it ends up being auxiliary space utilized for residential purposes, that doesn't provide a whole lot of things for the, for the public to, to take advantage of. We looked at this, obviously, as four distinct areas. The, one being primarily residential, one being primarily commercial-professional, and then, of course, the conservation area. The fourth, Subarea B, being that which would provide some level of interest that the public can go to and shop and, and participate in at a community level. If this doesn't materialize as retail or, or other space that could be visited by the public, somewhat undermines the, that, that benefit. So, whether or not that's, that's important, certainly you're prerogative to decide, but I do think that that changes the meaning of that substantially.
Mr. President, I agree with Mr. Flippeak, I caught that, too. It does totally deviate from, if, if you start using that as workout centers, card rooms, playrooms, for the residential people above, the public people who are doing their walk-around neighborhood aren't having, don't have the ability to use those, those, those areas that may be coffee shops, or-
Or the general public.
Or the general public, so on. And I totally agree with you. And I would like to amend it that way into the, into the language, if that's okay.
Second?
Yes.
I, I, excuse me, but I think Mr. Zeeman's going to say, what, if we don't include that amendment, it would just go back to the original, would it not?
Correct. Counsel, just for clarity, and so the record's clear, I would encourage you to take any amendments one by one by affirmative motion. So if there's no amend, if there's no motion in a second to amend condition number three, then it just stands as currently written in, in the ordinance.
So I'm hearing Councilman Donovan say he's, would not be in favor in, of amending condition number three?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Martin. Yes.
Yeah, Mr. President, at any point in time, I'd love, there are a couple of thoughts I'd love to share, but don't know when that's appropriate to-
Okay.
On that particular point, I guess maybe a little background. We had a conversation with the planning commission about this, and the condition was kind of created, I think, final wording afterwards. One discussion we had, our concern without something in there, I understand, maybe we've gone too far, was we just want to make sure that it wasn't precluding, because with residential above, we have to have a way to get people up there. And the way it was originally worded, it made it sound like there was no way to have residential access on the ground floor, and how do we get people up? Because there's going to be a residential use on the foundation of some of these buildings, because you've got to have a lobby, you've got to have access up. So, we were concerned the way it was written before, it was basically precluding what we were all trying to get, which is residential above. So-
So, Mr. Herman-
This is our, this is our attempt to try to make sure we-
You're really saying access, not amenities?
Yes. I mean, I think we threw amenities, because we thought if there was a, and I understand the concern, we weren't trying to say we're going to replace the, the front edge along this. We were trying to say, if there was a workout room, or some kind of related piece that was an amenity that, again, was transparent and active, that might not be a bad thing along the street. But I do understand, it does come across as like, we could replace the whole thing. That's not the intent, it was just to make sure we could get the residential piece.
Mr. President, Kathy, what's your take on that? Would that be something that would go to planning, and then we could review it and approve it or disapprove it? You just don't want to give an open run on the, on the lower level, and have them start adding for the residents below, workout rooms, lobbies, things like that. That'll come in front of planning anyway, correct?
Right. So if any residential was, was proposed above the first, sorry, above the retail component, it would have to go through the final development plan, due process. So, it would, it would still be subject to everybody's-
Mr. Flippeak, but I consider your language almost, it has to be in there. And I don't see a problem with that, putting that language in there, because it's going to come to planning anyway, it just gives us another, another gateway. I don't, I don't, I don't feel you have a problem with that.
No.
Okay. I'd say we amend it the way you said it.
Well, I think what we were suggesting is that-
Not, not change it, not change it, okay.
Not amend it.
Not amend it.
I would point out, though, counsel, that there is a slight change that is incorporated into your ordinance that departs slightly from what the planning commission approved in number three, which I think the law director added. And I don't recall, Mr. Zeeman, you draw their, drew their attention to that already?
No, it's, I believe the administration had proposed some additional modifications. Ordinance 002 already incorporates those. But obviously, if the council wants to further amend those conditions, it's prerogative to do so.
I have a question for the administration. Is access a problem? Is it implied? Is it already built in?
I would certainly look at it that way. Mr. Landig, I don't really view, I think it's, I think it's obvious that we would probably have to make that accommodation in some manner. I really don't see that as something that needs to be explicitly stated anymore than we would necessarily have to state that they have to comply with all of the provisions of the code. They're going to have access, probably going to need access from a fire code standpoint on that first floor.
Correct, yeah.
I, I think that where we would probably part ways in terms of, of being content with the end result, be if that access turned out to be the entire and sole use of, of that space, which I don't think that they're intending right now by, at least with respect to guaranteeing that access.
Okay. It sounds like number three could be just modified for access. It could be left as is, but, because access is probably implied. That's what I'm hearing. Okay. So there's no need to change three.
Can we at least add the word residential access to that?
Mr. President, I, I never read it that way myself, and I'm pretty, pretty paranoid. So, so, yeah, I think you can have a nice little lobby, so that your residents can access it. I think to, yeah, I think to council and to the administration's point, the, the idea that, you know, maybe you would have ground floor daycare, you know, workspace, things of that nature. I, I don't know, ground floor retail with allowance for small, small office, it's currently what it is. I don't know if that precludes absolutely further amendments if there's a restaurant use or things of that nature. I'm just, I'm not saying it should be that way, I'm just suggesting it. But just so the council understands that, you know, those are permitted uses in the PMUD, and so if there's an opportunity to get a restaurant use around the ground level, and this, on this, you know, that, that would be potentially the subject of a future amendment. So, I think that's the type of thing where the PMUD district regulations does, does allow for some flexibility in the future, if, if the right use is materialized.
And certainly not a substantial change.
I would not make that decision.
What's your pleasure, counsel, on amendment, the amendment to condition three?
Leave as is, without, without the added language, correct? Isn't that what we talked about?
Well, if there's no motion.
Mr. President?
There's no motion, so.
All right. Without a motion, Mr. Flippeak.
Yeah, Mr. President, I certainly think we had no objections to just stating for the record here tonight that the city would not consider access, residential access, as a departure from, from this provision.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Can we address the condition number one, which was revising for the exhibits that were given to us tonight?
Would you approve?
Well, Mr. President, just in terms of order, I think substituting revised Exhibit B and B2, and, and further amending condition number one at Paragraph 1 to state, you know, as amended, would be a proper motion.
So move. Mr. President?
I have a motion.
Can you just have the law director reread?
Yeah.
Each.
Perfect. Clarify, Mr. Law Director.
Yes. There's really no way to, because they're, they're visual exhibits, I can't really do much except show you the visual exhibits. Again, the revised Exhibit B would be the Figure 5-1 that was submitted by the applicant before the council meeting. And again, it just shows the modified estate lots in Subarea A in the northeast corner as larger than the current Exhibit Number B in, in Ordinance Number 002. The revised Exhibit B2 is the applicant's Figure 5-6. It just zooms in on Sub, on Subarea A, and again, its modification is that the estate lots, along with they label as Street E, are larger than what's currently attached to Ordinance 002. If council wants to see that amended, so those larger lots are included as part of Ordinance 002, then obviously there'd be a motion second, and if it passes, these would simply be substituted for B and B2. Just to avoid any confusion, because current condition number one references plans that were submitted dated November 25th, I would recommend that, that current condition number one, just at the, just at the end of the first sentence, state "as amended." Just keep that new language in there.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
The amendment passes on the ordinance for condition one. Let's move to condition 17, which was other parking remedies, was the language for amendment. Yes, please.
Again, current condition number 17 reads, "In Subarea B or Subarea C, parking shortages due to the shared parking concept shall be resolved by introducing structured parking." The new language, if amended, would state, "Or via other remedies acceptable upon final approval of an amendment to the development plan," period.
Discussion?
Would you approve?
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Martin.
For the law director. Repeat that again?
Yes, sir. "In Subarea B or Subarea C, parking shortages due to the shared parking concept shall be resolved by introducing structured parking." The new language would state, "Or via other remedies acceptable upon final approval of an amendment to the development plan."
Which, of course, would have to go in front of planning commission.
And, and the council. If-
Just want to clarify that, make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion, and second it. Call the question. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Okay. Condition number 19, could you read the language, Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, Mr. President, this would be, this would be new condition number 19. The amendment would state that, number 19, "Construction and hall roads shall not utilize Johnny Cake Ridge Road, State Route 84, and may only utilize Center Street, State Route 615, as approved by the city manager."
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Question for the administration. Administration is comfortable with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does the applicant have any comment?
We appreciate the, the ability, per city manager, that if there was some extenuating reason, we completely understand the concern, but just the ability, if there's agreement from city staff, that there was a reason at some point, a need to get access to 84, have that limited permission would be great. So, we appreciate, we don't have objection to them.
It's recording.
Relative to emergencies, or some such?
Or for some reason, we had to, digging the detention pond or something like that, we had to have access from 84, I mean, those kind of things. But not as a regular convenience for construction.
Would you approve? Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Zeeman, new condition 20.
Yes, Mr. President. That would, that would read, "Changes to the approved preliminary and/or final development plans and/or conditions shall require council review and an amendment to Ordinance Number 20-0-" and/or conditions shall require council review and an amendment to ordinance number 20002 after review and recommendation by the municipal planning commission."
Would you approve?
Second.
Call the roll, Julie.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
And condition number 21, Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, Mr. President. That's, that condition would state, "There shall be no residential or retail uses in subarea C."
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Applicant.
I may, thank you. Understand what you're going with that. I just, one, for context on the retail piece, our intent was not to substitute retail in there, but we do see retail as a secondary use as important. So, for example, the office building, having a restaurant in the first floor would be an amenity, I think, that would be very important to have that ability to do, or the hotel, having some kind of restaurant related to it. I mean, I think we'd be willing to say as a secondary use, but we don't want to exclude retail from the subarea C.
Mr. Philippiak, any comment on reasonableness of the applicant's explanation?
Well, I think what they're suggesting is probably reasonable, because office buildings do need little lunch counters and things like that, or, you know, maybe even a prescription service or something in there. But I think you'd want to prohibit it as a primary use and allow it as a secondary use within a commercial, commercial and professional use.
Do you read that, Joe?
Can we confer for just a moment?
Yeah. Yes.
Counsel, in other words, within a building that is primarily used for a non-retail purpose.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Philippiak, that, as a second use, that would come back to planning and council anyway, correct?
It would, it would. In fact, I think the site development plan would be reviewed by Planning Commission in any case, so it would be fairly easy to regulate that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. So some discussion, I think, we were wondering if you could limit it to a percentage, like 35% as a maximum of retail in subarea C. There's some discussions about whether a retail, even if it was standalone as part of this, is important, and also thinking about the clinic, Cleveland Clinic on the other side of the street, should that come to fruition, having some ability for a limited amount of retail in subarea C.
I would probably say no.
Mr. Donovan?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Yeah, I would probably go with the secondary use at this time in the condition.
Secondary use, does that, question administration, does that come with a percentage?
Well, we're making the sub as we go here, so. It's really council's prerogative, I think, the general, the general idea, which I think we are supportive of, is that that would be primarily used for office and/or professional purposes, you know, maybe even some sort of permissible light industrial application or research facility of some type, all of which would probably complement very well things in the area such as the Cleveland Clinic. What I'm thinking of is in terms of what would need to serve those purposes, probably within, so taking up space within a building that is primarily used for a non-retail purpose. You know, there are a lot of ways that we could do this, if you were comfortable with, you know, a limitation that, or, I'm sorry, a provision, a condition that would limit a percentage of the area that had to be reviewed and approved by you at that time, you could consider that, too. A lot of ways to do this, we.
If, let me, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Donovan.
If that, if that, if we put it through the way it is, the way we just talked about, and it's a deviation from the plan, they would come back to planning anyway and say, hey, we want to put a restaurant in. And then planning would say, yeah, that's a good idea, that's a good spot. Why don't we do it that way instead of a percentage? Percentage? Secondary. Ultimately. They come to planning, say, hey, we want to put a restaurant in, and planning says, yes.
Yeah, councilman, I mean, ultimately, the Planning Commission in this council is going to be the arbiter of what constitutes a reasonable substitute for what you're hearing about this evening or what gets approved in that preliminary plan. Experience, for our applicant's benefit, I think experience has shown us that our Planning Commission and past councils have always been pretty reasonable about finding and approving complementary uses, things that enhance the area. I think what they're looking to avoid is, you have a couple, several professional buildings there, and then the McDonald's goes up next to it. So I'll leave it up to, I think, certainly, administration's confidence, confident in council's discretion on this, and I think that's a very reasonable way to approach it.
Thank you.
If I may, we completely agree, and we're fine having, coming back to Planning Commission. I think, once again, our only concern is that if this is taking retail, the permitted uses, and we come back and we have a retail that we convince Planning Commission, well, it makes sense, we just want to make sure this isn't another major deviation that means we have to go back to the voters. I mean, that's our concern in taking it completely out. Are we going to make a use change? I think that starts rising up towards the major deviation. That's our concern.
I think that you would be getting, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I keep jumping in. I think that you would be getting, you would be getting retail as a secondary, which would not bring you back to a referendum?
Again, I think this council and the commission has a lot of discretion in defining what constitutes a significant departure. If you don't view it as such, then I think your, that method of approaching approval is just fine.
Okay.
If council doesn't see it as a major departure, and it fits, it fits in, then you're the decision makers in terms of whether it has to go back to the voters. So it's got to get past them under any circumstance. So I would feel comfortable.
Come on, Chris, you like that.
We trust all you, as long as it doesn't mean we're going back to the start.
Let's go with that amendment.
If I may, can I just clarify, again, Thomas Coyne, Thompson Heine. So the applicant is fully on board with having to secure approval of both Planning Commission and council for any primary retail use. Could we allow for, number one, ancillary retail use in connection with any office use, and then also, subject to the express approval of the Planning Commission and the council, additional primary retail use? We have no plans for that. This is a long-term project, we're just trying to provide some flexibility, and would agree to submit to the discretion of the council.
Mr. President, I think secondary use gives all the flexibility you need. It's in, the language is in there, retail language is in there. So if it's a secondary use, there's any number of retail uses you can come back at. It's not a game changer as far as the plan is concerned, as far as I'm concerned, but that's just my opinion.
Mr. President, I agree with that. To the applicant, are there specific retail uses you have in mind relative?
Not at all, no. We're looking at a long-term development project, and again, the concern is to have to go back to the voters on a use change, which typically would be considered a major deviation. And if we're, if they were prohibited from having any primary retail use, that could be an impediment. We're just providing, want to provide flexibility to both the applicant and the city council.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zeeman, correct me if I'm wrong, but a secondary use, approved by planning and council, doesn't go back to a referendum, correct?
Yeah, I think we're talking a little bit too abstract, to be blunt. I think basically the Planning Commission, the administration, and council have all reacted to what the proposal was, which was a designated area showing potentially one hotel operator, and then office buildings. So you've got your market studies, I know you've shared those with the administration. What do those market studies say, you know, maybe on the horizon in terms of retail uses in subarea C, that the council, you know, can deliberate tonight, if in fact it's going to allow for what might become a principal use in this area, if your suggestion carries?
Again, we have no specific, you know, retail use in mind, it's simply a question of preserving flexibility. Would it be possible to have, you know, language to the effect that a, you know, a limited percentage, again, determination of the council, would be permitted to be primary use, subject to approval of the city?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm uncomfortable with the percentage part. I think we should go with the secondary use in our amendment and vote on it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Zeeman.
If I may, just to your point, you know, in the city's experience when dealing with development, often the first potential business that we may want to locate isn't necessarily the ideal business in terms of the city's overall comprehensive plan to locate an area. So obviously, there may be a national retailer with a lot of economic might that can come in and say, hey, we want to build here, and that may produce a, you know, a great immediate return on investment. But that retail use, you know, may not be consistent with what, you know, the comprehensive plan is for the city. The lesson is Newell Creek, where, as I stated earlier, there were proposals in the former Lifestyle Center to bring in a large grocery store, gas station, apartments. The patience of city leaders, current and past, has resulted in the clinic nearly breaking ground there. We've got Avery, we've got CT consultants, we've got, I can go down the list. It's an extremely important component, I think, objectively, when reviewing the comprehensive plan, that this area be set aside for Class A office, medical use. Now, I'm not saying that that's ultimately what council should do here tonight, but I think the concern is that there shouldn't be an immediate ability to change this, what's designated in this area, knowing that it may be a 20-year build-out. So if I may, Mr. President, I think perhaps some language, simply saying there shall be no residential or principal retail uses in subarea C, perhaps that addresses the issue so that you don't get a standalone retailer, and that perhaps, consistent with perhaps subarea B, you may see subarea C getting developed in a like manner, only rather than ground floor, or, excuse me, upper floor residential, you'd have upper floor office as opposed to, you know, strictly commercial building, office building.
Mr. President? Just a second. Could you read condition 21 again as you've?
Yeah, I would just add the word, "There shall be no residential or principal retail uses in subarea C."
Mr. Donovan?
Right. Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Why would you lock yourself in it at not knowing?
It's not locked in. It's not, it's not, I mean, it's.
Well, we just heard this dissertation about substantial deviation. To me, that's a substantial deviation. With the administration and what Mr. Kirschner said, being secondary, which you originally agreed on.
Yeah, secondary, exactly. And that's not a bad thing.
Right.
Comes with planning and council, it's perfect.
Exactly.
It's perfect.
So it's cut and dry, it's done.
It is. I agree with you. So moved.
Okay, we've got three already, go ahead.
We have a motion on the floor? Was it seconded?
Rated.
And seconded. But there is no word, just point of discussion, there is no secondary in there now, it's just principal.
I can change the language to whatever council desires.
I'm unclear now what we're, principal versus secondary. Mr. Zeeman, if you could amplify that.
I could change the language. There shall be no residential use in subarea C, only secondary retail uses may be permitted in subarea C.
And, Mr. President, just to clarify, I'd like to get the administration's feedback on that, to make sure we're all on the same page with what Mr. Philippiak originally stated.
I certainly appreciate what we're all trying to do here. I think we're a little bit, again, all everybody here recognizes that this is going to be around for a long time, this development, if a full development. I would maybe want to avoid something that, on its face, sounds prohibitive in nature.
Correct.
So, can we read that back one more time?
Yes, Mr. Zeeman, please read it again.
All right. I just modified it a little bit more, so that it would state, "There shall be no residential use in subarea C," period. Retail may only be permitted as a secondary use in subarea C. And if I may, Mr. President, I'm not really sure that secondary use is really a great term of art here.
I think if I heard the administration, we're getting down in the weeds on a preliminary plan, is that fair to say?
Well, I think what we would want, I think what we're okay with, from our perspective, is what we refer to as either secondary or ancillary use of retail within a building that is a, that is primarily designated as a non-retail use or purpose. The question of whether or not we could repurpose any of that space for primary retail, let's call it, would certainly be something that I think we're all comfortable, that if council and planning commission think is appropriate, you could do. But in recognizing that if there was something that complemented the area that was a primary use, whether it was on 5% of it or 20% of it, of that area, I would be careful to not put in language that some of us who aren't in the room today are going to read and say, well, there's no way you can put up such and such business there because look at that language. So I, but that may satisfy that. I, we, I guess for the applicant's benefit and for the community's benefit, we wouldn't want it completely prohibit, we wouldn't want the language to read so much so that it could be easily read on its face as prohibiting any retail that may come along down the road that you want to approve it specifically. So you may want something in there that says, unless specifically approved by city council, as a.
As an out.
As a departure.
Well, that begs the question, if the condition, right now, I think we, I believe we have a motion and a second, but then the wording was changed by Mr. Zeeman, am I correct?
I tried to revise it in response to some of the comments that I've just heard.
Yes, it's a dynamic condition. But, so, but parliamentary procedure, we have a motion and a second, do we need to withdraw that because the language has been changed? And then we either need to vote up this condition or vote it down after further discussion.
I believe that the motion was made after I read the revised language.
Okay, could you read the revised language again, Mr. Zeeman?
Okay. So, "There shall be no residential use in the subarea C, and retail may only be permitted as a secondary use in subarea C." I had suggested that, I think Mr. Philippiak's use of the term ancillary may be a better term of art for zoning purposes.
Okay. And if we have a current motion to amend for condition 21 and a second, is there any further discussion? Julie, call the roll.
It's, it's, it's a motion? It's secondary.
The word is secondary.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
No.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Condition 21 is passed. Have we completed the conditions that we've been discussing tonight, Mr. Zeeman?
I didn't have anything further in my notes, but obviously, counsel, there may be additional conditions.
Yes. Also remind council that we have, the ordinance as amended is on first reading still.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sort of a planning commission item, but I know it's been brought up at the planning commission level and this law, too. And it's not a difficult thing to solve, but Mr. Quayle brought up headlight issues, mitigation. I'm sure you're aware of that, and you know there's a ton of techniques to, you know, mitigate that. So just want to, I know he was. So, just want to, I know he was pretty, you know, adamant about it, so. And it is, it will cause some issues if it's not worked out with, probably going to have to work with him to get that resolved.
We appreciate that. When we get to the final development plan level, we'll get it down into those deals so we can detail, we can understand that.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll be glad to say, motion two.
Any more discussion on any point?
You sure?
We have an amended ordinance, number 20-O-002, and it is on first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-O-002 has passed. Ordinance number 20-O-003.
Sorry.
Forgot about the rest of the meeting.
Maybe there's more?
Where are we?
Forgot.
Story by the ratified ordinances of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended by adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, council. These are sort of the, I'll call them routine amendments to harmonize our code of ordinances with revisions to state code. We contract with the Walter Drang Company to do these revisions, and I'd encourage council to adopt them.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-O-003 has passed, and as the public is leaving, I just want to say, what we did tonight means it goes to the voters. So, that will be Mentor residents' ultimate chance to vote on this proposed preliminary plan for the Bolton property. Thank you. Ordinance number 20-O-004.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mentor incentive grant with South Shore Controls.
Mr. Philippiac?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are fortunate to have both Mr. Malachek and Ms. Conrad here with us this evening. I will defer to Director Malachek.
Thank you, Manager Philippiac. South Shore Controls has just moved into the city of Mentor, relocated from Perry, and has just built their 35,000 square foot facility at 9395 Pine Cone Drive. It's a total new investment for the city of 3.2 million, in excess of 3.2 million. The project is relocating 46 employees to Mentor, and they do expect to create 15 additional jobs. We have requested in the Mentor incentive grant proposal, 10% grant on new payroll retroactive in 2019 when they moved into the city in November on, and a 50% grant in years 2020 through 2028 if they do meet their payroll expectations. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Counsel. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-O-004 has been approved. Resolution number 20-R-101.
A resolution requesting an advance of funds collected for the benefit of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac?
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is our annual request for the auditor to distribute early our property tax revenues.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 20-R-101 has been adopted. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Managers report. Mr. Philippiac?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will keep this short, council. First of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Landig on your ascension to the presidency. We look forward to working under your leadership. And also, congratulations, Mr. Krieger. It's been our pleasure to work with you for the last two years, and I think we've got a lot done together, so appreciate all your cooperation.
Ascension is a proper word.
Whatever it might be. Just a few things, council, just a reminder to the public that the Mentor Chill Out, which is our winter outdoor activity at the amphitheater grounds, will take place on Sunday, January 19th, at the Civic Center Park, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which will be transformed into a winter wonderland with all-day activities, a chili cook-off, food trucks, as well as a fireworks display, which is unusual for us in the wintertime. Chill Out will take place, snow or shine, admission, and most activities are free, and there are details on the city's website. Would like to congratulate firefighter/paramedic Don Bednarik for his 30 years of service to the community. Don will be retiring on January 19th, 2020. Very distinguished career, and we appreciate all his service to the community. And then finally, we wish to welcome a few new businesses to the city. All In Adventures at 7850 Mentor Avenue, Master D's Pizza at 7502 Mentor Avenue, and Burg and Go at 7850 Mentor Avenue, which is in the Great Lakes Mall Food Court. So, congratulations to them, and we appreciate and welcome their investment in the community. That's all.
Clerk's correspondence, Julie?
Council's en receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court month-end report of November 2019. That is all.
Commission committee reports, meeting minutes, Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, November 12, 2019. Municipal Planning Commission, November 14, 2019. Are in your packets. Old business.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marne?
I know I speak for all of council, but I'd like to personally thank the administration, everybody, not only in Parks Recreation, planning, finance, what have you, but you guys doing one hell of a job. We are on our winter break, and I can tell you the amount of people that came up to me over the holidays and just said, what a pleasure it is to live in Mentor. And I said, well, you guys make our jobs easy. So, I want to thank everyone in administration for a great 2019 and hopefully even better 2020. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Landig? Yes, Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Marne beat me to it. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. You guys did a heck of a job, including the last probably six to eight months. It's been incredible. Lot of pressure put on administration, Kathy, everybody involved, the engineers, you know, fire chief and police chief. This has been a group effort with this, with the planning, and I've never seen anything like it in my life. It's absolutely incredible. And what everybody did to protect the citizens and get the best possible product we can get is absolutely out of this world, and I want to thank everybody for all their hard work. It was a great job.
We've built a lot of trust, so thank you. New business. Council, we have appointments to be made to boards and commissions. We have two four-year terms on the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, ending 12/31/23. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Richard Zalesky to serve a four-year term on the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, ending 12/31/23.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
No.
Chief, you got your defibrillator over there?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
All right.
Dowling, yes.
Are there any other additional nominations?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to reappoint Joe Ifelice.
I second that.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
We have one four-year term on the Municipal Planning Commission, ending 12/31/23. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. President, I would like to reappoint Jeffrey Varga.
I second that nomination.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
There is one three-year term on the Fair Housing Board, ending 12/31/22. Do I have any nominations?
President, I'd like to reappoint Julie and Curtis.
Mr. President, I second that motion.
It's not a reappointment, so could we amend that?
Oh, I'm sorry, appointing, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And it's been seconded?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
We have three two-year term on the Board of Tax Review, ending 12/31/21, but one will be appointed by the city manager, so council will appoint two this evening. Do I have any nominations?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Steve Ammerman to the tax board.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations?